Let's officially call this special meeting to order and second item on the agenda for the record, 100% of the commissioners are here, clerk and the town manager and staff. Public comment, do we have any public comment to put in the record matter clerk?
No, sir.
Hearing nine, we'll move to item number three on the agenda and discuss and consider possible action in regards to the generator for town hall, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. At the 19th May regular meeting, the board requesting some follow-up information be obtained from James River and Gregory Poole regarding the as appropriate or needed, depending on which company it was, the enclosure wind load, the sound suppression system, decibel load, the cost of the load bank test and prices on the stainless steel enclosure. I've amended the matrix provided to you previously that I can go through those inputs or what is what's your pleasure on that.
Commissioner Swett, you got any thoughts or comments?
Let's go to him.
The James River enclosure, well, first of all, the price of the stainless steel enclosures, that was in addition to the original information. Gregory Poole came back and said stainless steel, $45,000.
Give me that.
The Gregory Poole, they were, I'm sorry, James River revised their quote and upped it by $8,000. So that was the, that's the cost of the stainless steel enclosure. Additionally, James River upped their quote from 59.6 to 68,160 with just an aluminum enclosure there. The enclosure wind load from James River, their input here is that their standard enclosure, which is the aluminum one, is 100 mile an hour wind load, but they did not have any supplier info on that. So I've got, that's just a salesman telling me that with no supplier info. The sound suppression system on that from James River is 75 decibels at seven meters, 21 feet. And the load bank test cost is $400 from James River. Gregory Poole had all their information previously provided. You had only requested that we gather those other three inputs for the James River to compare it with Gregory Poole.
Questions and comments?
But first of all, like on the, can you permit, what's the minimum wind load that thing's about to have?
Well, when they say 100 mile per hour standard for the generator, what they're talking about is that that's an engineered enclosure and it's against three-second gusts. That would be the equivalent of 150 mile per hour if you were looking at it in the numbers.
So you can permit that?
Yeah, I can permit 100 mile per hour standard because that's against the three-second gusts, which is the equivalent of what we build over here.
Okay.
That's the same thing if you give a look at your code.
Okay. David, the warranties on those two generators, what's the difference in the warranties there?
The difference in the warranties, the CAT comes with four years standard warranty and the John Deere is two years of 2,000 hours. And then the additional per year price for the John Deere, which you can buy, is basically another $1,000 a year.
$1,000 a year for service?
What, no, for a warrant.
For warrant?
Yeah. So as Mr. Murdock said last month, to get the same amount of warranty, you're basically increasing the price by $2,000.
But they're pretty close on price-wise, but my next question is to extend that on now, like take it, if we can get a 10-year warranty, which they've already, I know we can get that, okay? I'd like to know what that costs, okay? And, you know, for us.
There's a, are you talking about for Gregory Poole or John Deere?
From.
Gregory Poole, they've got, it's about three pages of a menu, you decide on what you want to do. It's about three pages of that. If that's the type of information that you want, I'll have to run upstairs and get it. That was not what you had asked for previously though.
Because I don't think that there's not going to be a vote on it today, I don't think, I mean.
Or we need to.
We were hoping.
Well, I mean, my only thing is I'd like to see, I'd like to know, like on the longer warranty with the Caterpillar, you know what I'm saying, what their cost would be per year? Because right now, we're like apples to apples here, it seems, on the cost. Because they had to, they had to go up two grand to meet the warranty, like John Deere, okay? They had to go up a couple of grand to meet the warranty, same thing, you know, to have four years of warranty, correct? So what does that do number-wise and also the fuel capacities? We've got two different, pretty substantial different fuel capacities here, like one's 500 something and one's 700.
Well, where we are, and you have to understand the informal bid solicitation process. If we're going to go into that type of detail, we need to have an engineer draw the specifications so it can be competed, so it can be competed and they can submit their bids based on those specifications. Because the informal bid solicitation process is just that, it's informal and it is more generic and it is meant for equipment or apparatus that costs between 30 and 90,000 dollars is what that's meant to be.
I think we need to go on with this. I can answer some of your questions. One, the stainless steel enclosure.
Without the wind?
I spoke with Doug again.
Have you spoken to, have you spoken to him since the board met and asked for this information? Y'all, that's a problem when board members are engaging with vendors on the outside when I'm supposed to be the one doing that. Because if there is information that the board wants to get from it and I am the purchasing and contracting officer, that information is supposed to come from me. As the boards represented.
Well, I apologize, overstepping my boundaries, but anyway, there was a humongous difference in the stainless. So I just asked him why, what would be the advantage of stainless versus aluminum? And he said none. He said he could get aluminum, it would last just as long.
And as a matter of fact, one of the pieces of that increase from 59 to 68 included an additional coating on the back end of the gin set. In my opinion, you can buy a lot of paint for $8,000. I mean, aluminum will oxidize, but you can buy a lot of paint for $8,000.
David, I want to make sure I understand and make this agreement correctly on the John Deere is 350 for the first, per year for the first four years?
Or yeah, I'm sorry.
John Deere under the maintenance agreement?
Frequency and terms?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's 350 each year for the first four years and 600 to 50?
Yes, sir.
And that's one time a year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Caterpillar is twice a year, 1160.
Correct.
Okay.
Justice, do you have any concern with the difference between the tank size, between the 784 gallons and 500 gallons?
That's more of a dimensional footprint constraint. I know that in talking with the building inspector, I don't have any concern about it. What it does correlate to is actual, I mean, a whole small gallons, of course, is your number of days operationally that you could, that you could run and.
Have we ever?
If we're good for three days, it burns about 10 gallons an hour. If we're, if we're good for three days, that's fine. Anything beyond that, we're looking at a whole different set of circumstances. I think that three days is, is fine beyond generator power.
So at 10 gallons an hour?
Now, as a matter of fact, all of those engines, about 10 gallons an hour.
Okay, so at 10 gallons an hour to John Deere, you couldn't run but two days before you need fuel?
Depending on what the load is.
Yes.
Depending on what the load is. Because it can go from six gallons an hour to 12 gallons an hour.
I know the last meeting, I asked you if you had a recommendation, you said you do not. Do you have a preference between these two vendors?
No, I just want to, my preference is for the generator to come on when the power goes out.
Well, understand that.
That's, that's the, that's the main thing. I just want to make sure that the board is aware of its responsibilities when it comes to letting the contracts under the informal bid process. And bear with me if this seems tedious, and this is from public contracts 143, 131, when towns, they let contracts on informal bids. All contracts for the purchase of apparatus, supplies, material or equipment involving the expenditure of public money in the amount of $30,000 or more, but less than the limits prescribed in 143, 129, which is $90,000, made by any officer, department, board, local school, administrative unit or commission of any county, city, town, any county, city, town or other subdivision of the state shall be made after informal bids have been secured. All such contracts shall be awarded to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, taking into consideration the quality, performance and the time specified in the bids for the performance of the contract. It shall be the duty of any officer, department head, department, board, local school, administrative unit or commission entering into such contract to keep a record of all bids submitted and such records shall not be subject to public inspection until the contract has been awarded. So those three criteria, what y'all looking at.
Further conversation, anyone?
I guess, I guess my looking at this is if we're going to go with the aluminum, that there's a difference when you put in the cost of the maintenance contract, it's $2,000 for the John Deere and it's $5,800 for the Caterpillar. So Caterpillar gives us two more years that we don't have to pay for it and Caterpillar has, gives us 284 gallons more. So the question is, is the two years upfront plus the 284 gallons worth more than approximately $17,000, which is the difference when you add up the extended cost of the warranty with the purchase cost, which is 59,000 for the Deere and 69,000 for the Caterpillar?
Well, I want to point, I want to point out, they updated their quote from 59 to 68,160.
Have you had any warranties, sir?
That's in red, so I assume that that was for the stainless steel?
No, stainless steel, stainless steel, it adds the $8,000 onto the 68, you take that total to 77.
I did the math, if you buy two more years of the warranty with the James, with the John Deere, that takes the price to 70, 160, give or take $10. And a five-year, excuse me, a four-year maintenance agreement would be, no, I'm sorry, five-year maintenance agreement would be $2,000. So you're looking at over five years, $72,000. If you take the Caterpillar, 69, 650, but their maintenance agreement is 1160 a year, times five would be 5,800, that makes us 74, almost $75,000, so.
And but also you need to point out that the CAT's doing two maintenance inspections a year, maintenance.
So divided in half, it's 2,500 or 2,900, whatever.
The CAT's got 180 mile an hour wind closure too.
The CAT's got a bigger tank on it too.
A bigger fuel tank and longer runtime when you need it. Which my calculations, the CAT would run 34 hours longer than the Deere.
Yeah.
Could be wrong.
I'll make a motion, I assume we need to make a motion on what to do?
Board's open for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we choose Caterpillar.
Second.
Motion made second to purchase the Caterpillar generator. Board's open again for further discussion. Anyone, Ms. Pat, anyone? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
opposed say no, unanimously approved to buy CAT.
If I could add in here that the footnotes that I've drawn down at the bar, that the pause is as close to the end of the fiscal year, that will encumber the funds that the board has already approved, but they'll also need to be re-appropriated in the budget, that's the dot. And those, I forget right off the top of my head, I think I used that incorrect approach and approximated what that would be whenever I prepared the draft budget for y'all. But just when that comes up, you'll see that the new town hall maintenance line is probably going to be, I think is, is higher than it was this year. That's part of the explanation on that.
All right, Mr. Hewitt, you lead us into the budgets workshop?
I've got a series of several slides and then, of course, the budget worksheets are actually at the end and I'll take a seat after that. But as a preamble, normally, we have, we have several budget workshops. We had one back in April and the board had looked at some of their goals prior to that and that's primarily what we're trying to do. Whenever we have our own workshop. But suffice it to say that the pandemic has severely impacted how our budget process works. You've seen some of these first slides earlier. What we have to do is you've got to adopt the budget by 1st of July, by budget ordinance. I have to give you a budget message by the 1st of June, which is Monday, and the department heads have to give me their inputs by the 30th of April, which they did early on. What we've done, y'all did your objectives and ranked them. Department heads got their stuff to you back in late March. Since then, we've been going through a daily cycle of what's going to happen, where are we, what might happen? And suffice it to say that not only have we lost six weeks, but it feels like that we spun our wheels a lot too in trying to anticipate what might happen and how the pandemic gets, if that happens. Y'all asked me to provide you with a draft formatted budget today at the meeting that we held previously. Couple of things about how the public hearing has to play out. There is a process change now, we have the public hearing on the 16th of June at the board's next regularly scheduled meeting. Y'all cannot adopt the budget that night. Sometimes, normally you can, but because of COVID, new legislation has come through since there are distance learners or distance participants to provide the 24 hours to give the board input as to what might happen or become out of the public hearing. So you cannot adopt the budget on the 16th of June. And I believe that we set the date to consider the budget, or have we done it yet?
We talked about it, but we didn't, just had to be the 24 hours after.
What you can't do, especially now with the 24-hour requirement, but you've never been able to adopt the budget any earlier than 10 days after the message is presented to you. And some of the considerations that went into preparing the budget were overcome, the board's goals were overcome by events. One of the three legs holding this stool up of the budget is, in my opinion, that the previous beach nourishment strategy is obsolete just because we've got FEMA projects that are going to take, take the place of that. Our tourism-related revenues and expenses will very likely be impacted. To what extent, I don't know. I spend probably two hours a day communicating with other coastal managers, not only coastal managers, but managers in North Carolina, South Carolina, nationwide, chambers of commerce, Moore Beach, North Moore Beach, Wilmington, go, what do you think, what do you think? We spend a lot of time and also communicating with rental property owners to think what is, what is happening, what are y'all seeing. So recommendations are, were and continue to be to make up any shortfalls from fund balance. And some of these slides reflect the perspective from a couple, three weeks back. As it turns out, when we start pushing some numbers around hard and adopting the strategy to appropriate capital reserves out of the sand fund to pay for, to pay for the debt service on the special obligation bond, that is not going to be necessary except for the capital reserve fund. And we've talked about pushing capital projects to arrive and that is not necessarily a requisite in this budget presentation or the proposed budget. I am obligated to tell you, I think Mr. Piner had a question that wasn't, it wasn't so much regarding an interim budget at the last, last meeting, but the statute does provide for the adoption of interim budget. However, I have neither been able to find anybody that has ever done it, that is contemplating it, nobody that knows how to do it or has ever, has got any track history or horror stories on how to do it. In my research, it appears to be overly complex, just not known, it's untried and untested. And my queries to the triumvirate of knowledge, the School of Government, Local Government Commission and the league, I have not been able to find anybody with practical experience doing that. So my advice to the board is, don't do it. Some other considerations, in talking with people up and down the coast nationwide, what do you think? The reactions and inputs that I'm getting, it goes from hand wringing, ostrich feathers, people putting their head in the sand pretending that it's not here and an overabundance of analysis on hypothetical situations that are just bizarre. Of course, that's the way the world works here. From the April workshop, the board's discussion and direction to me boiled down to program three additional police officers in there and pay for half of those through the B Part Fund. However, when I got into it, it didn't make sense and we can get into those details. So the three major recommendations that are contained in the budget proposal, so the draft laid proposal, is to use the beach in the capital reserves to pay for special obligation, pay for the special obligation bond and some specific strategic beach inlet expense. Reduce the tax rate by two cents from 20 to 18 and reduce the super assessment by 35% from $497 to $306. The beach in the capital reserve fund has been made obsolete by the approval of FEMA, Florence and Michael projects in the amount of $24 million. FEMA Dorian is still pending at $15 million more. That we believe will be approved soon, irregardless, it's either going to be $24 million worth of projects, $40 million projects, and if we have a busy hurricane season as is projected, it might be more. So those, all of those underscore the reality that the previous strategy of setting up a capital reserve fund for beach nourishment has been, has been made obsolete. And I don't, I don't say that lightly because at the time when that fiscal policy was adopted, we hadn't had the hurricanes and we were saving for that day when we thought, you know, 10 years out, that that's what would happen. These storms have come through and our circumstances are such that we're, we are ready to realize the preparations that have taken place over many years to be able to execute those FEMA projects and put a big beach out there. This proposed budget recommends paying for all the police expenses from the general fund, like that we go into in detail, but the short version is, is that when you bring in 1.4 million dollars out of the capital reserve fund, it's not necessary to make a contribution from the general fund over to the capital reserve fund because that strategy is obsolete and you don't have to augment the B Part Fund in order to make the payment on the special obligation bond. So when we, when I priced out the cost of two and a half officers in the B Part Fund and you add in the vehicles that are required, the amounts that we had previously been transferring from the general fund to the B Part Fund, they pretty much offset. It did not make sense to me that we're going to move money from the left pocket to the right pocket and pay the same deal. It was, it was basically a wash. So that's, that contributed a lot to a part of this recommendation. The second part, second recommendation is to reduce the tax rate by two cents and it also isn't enabled by that there's, there's not, it's not necessary to transfer general funds over to the B Part Fund or to the beach inlet. to the B Part Fund or to the beach inlet capital reserve fund. Additionally, at the next board meeting, if this is a viable strategy, or if the board considers this to be a viable strategy, I'm going to recommend to the board that they cancel this year's budgeted transfer from the general fund to the reserve fund for the same reason, that it does not make sense to pursue an obsolete strategy, that your money is better held in the general fund balance, because it will actually increase that fund balance to 84% approximately, which will have a positive impact on debt shopping. We talked about, we talked about over in the water and sewer fund, it's a good time to borrow money to do the sewer list station upgrade. Well, yeah, and the water fund revenue, the water fund enterprise aspect of that is what will be looked at, but it helps a whole lot if your fund balance is strong too. Lastly, reducing the sewer assessment by a third from $497 to $370. That sewer assessment is authorized by special legislation, and it's only authorized for sewer facilities' capital cost. Since we retired almost $700,000 of debt service this year, basically for the collection lines, BB and T, Sewer One, Sewer Two, we cannot charge that facility cost anymore. You can only charge now an amount that is equal to or less than the price for the capital cost of the transmission lines and the county's sewer debt. So it also recommends that even though we have an appropriation made in this year's budget to take care of the list station upgrade down there, the strategy would be to, let's go ahead and get in the pipeline for the local government commission to borrow the money for this existing outfit and the next outfit, just go ahead and do both of them at the same time. The borrow for, basically have an open line of credit for both of those list stations. The money's never going to be cheaper, in my opinion.
So, let me just ask you a question on that. So if we do that, then are we allowed to have an assessment to cover that amount of money?
That will be, I'm getting to that. Not this year, because you can only do your assessment based on your current debt, and you're going to have to set your tax rate when you adopt the budget and the sewer assessment is adopted, just like a tax rate.
So it'll go down this year and go up next year?
It'll have to go up next year. That's just the way it works. I think I'm a little bit ahead of myself there, shot and explaining. So yes, the sewer assessment, or the rates will have to bill up in order to cover the debt. It also proposes the lease purchase of a Vactor truck. That one that we have, it's worth a find, but we're starting to see the maintenance cost of those, I'm not even going to say creep up, they're jumping up quickly, so it's time to roll that out. And also, the engineering professional services are included for the second water tower, in addition to the capacity study for the sewer system, the sewer collection, the sewer capacity study. With the adjudication at the Supreme Court of the Oak Island case, I think that we're ready to do that now, that some things have settled out. Now dredging assessments are proposed to stay constant. This budget continues the rollback and recycling subscription service. It also provides a merit pool of 3% for personnel. It proposes to continue with our federal, state, and local beach inlets and waterway advocacy efforts, rollback recycling. I think I got two slides in here. The second half of Brunswick Avenue paving is in there, and then also two trucks will be procured, or proposed to be procured, one in the water sewer department and one in the beach department, B Part Fund, excuse me. Related follow-on actions, our current fiscal policy says that the desired general fund range is between 40 and 70%, with any unassigned fund balance in excess of 70% at the end of the year being transferred over to the beach inlet capital reserve fund. When our fund balance would go above that, as proposed to 84 estimated, we would need to not transfer that money over, it's counterintuitive. So the proposed budget by fund in the general fund, we're at, right at $3.3 million. The water sewer fund is close to $5 million. The B Part Fund is bloated with $24 million of Florence and Michael. That total budget's $27 million. And then the canal dredging fund is $2.7 million. Our capital reserve funds, once you pull the $1.4 million out, it'll be down to $1.8 million, and that ironically is enough that if the pandemic keeps perpetuating, our special obligation bond is about $1.3 million annually. That'll give you another year to pay that. If that doesn't work out on the water capital reserve side, I'm anticipating it's close to $100,000 now on the sewer side at 47, if those capacity charges stay where they are for this year. Just a couple of things about how the budget book is laid out, and these are really, really administrative. They're laid out by fund, the general fund, water sewer fund, the B Part Fund are all have a revenue page and then an expense page, and then in the B Part Fund, actually, those pages are separate. And the canal dredging fund has by subdivision revenues and expenses, like the department. And then lastly, the capital reserve funds, there's not a tab for those, actually, those amounts that are projected or in the previous slide. This budget, or the budget ordinance, does not include a capital improvement plan. I think that with all the bloodiness going on, that the town, the board would be better served if we come back in the fall and look at a capital improvement plan. Once we started going through that, and I know that the capital improvement plan, we're doing 10 years out, I just really got bowled down in all the what ifs and what ifs, so I put my hands and quit, and said, we'd be better off spending our time on getting the budget ordinance adopted this year. It is, the capital improvement plan is not a requirement of the Fiscal Control Act, it's more of a management board document, in that regard. There's five columns, left to right, and they read, the line item is the first one, the position of the town for the budget, last budget year, the last day of fiscal year is the first column, that's the actual as of June 30th of 19. The second column is this year's budget, and then the third column is where we were at as of near the end of April, and then, of course, the last column is the proposed budget for 2021. And with that said, I believe that is our last slide, with all of that for the board's direction in discussion. We do have the department in here today, so.
Thanks, sir. Any comments, questions from the commissioners?
Yes?
I would ask the board that if, from prior experience, if we have, and this goes to the order of the questions and dialogue, that if we would just work from the front of the book to the back, it helps with.
The flow.
Keep the tracks, but. But we'll do it however y'all want to.
I have a couple of questions, comments on the slides and considerations. While I can agree that the beach nourishment strategy, which was $10 million over 10 years starting a couple of years ago, is made obsolete by the fact that we are going to have a new set once we do a re-nourishment, having the, let's just call it the sand fund, the beach inlet reserves, sand reserve fund, whatever, is not obsolete. We were going to have a look at a hypothetical five-year plan of what it would take over five years, that would be the sort of doom work, sand fence work, and inlet costs, that would be a sort of a baseline that we know year in, year out, you know, you just have this, and that is going to be then something that we just needed to have savings to cover that. And that was getting worked on for our trip to DC, and Christie had continued to work on it and to discuss for budget. So if nothing else, we need to understand what a sort of an annual cost is for what I just term our normal maintenance, in addition to our inlet expenses, because that is not an insignificant amount of money. Then at some point in time, whether it ever gets clarified or not in the next couple of years, we still are going to be faced with dwindling federal support for beach nourishment, which is another reason that we felt it was important to have money being saved. Whether a million dollars a year was the right number or not, that was never proven, but there needed to be a savings every year in anticipation that we were going to have to pony up more in the future, either because the state ponies up less or federal starts to pull back, or we have another string where we don't have storms and we end up doing re-nourishment. So again, I can accept, and I do accept, that the beach nourishment strategy from a couple of years ago is obsolete, because we're going to have a new year one at some point, but having that fund and coming up with an amount of money to put into it annually is not obsolete, given our long-term obligations for simple maintenance and for the inlet, and with the recognition that in future it's going to be harder to get money for sand on the beach. With that, I would actually consider that we still put the money that we set aside for this year to go into that reserve fund, to go into it. We're going to be taking money out of it to fund, to pay for central reach, is the way I look at it. That doesn't mean we shouldn't put the money in that we budgeted this year. I still believe we should put the money in. We will be taking money out, but there's no reason not to put the funds in from this year that we have. And I'm reducing the tax rate by two cents. At this point in time, I'm quite uncomfortable reducing the tax rate, because again, we don't know exactly what is going to be happening. You have been conservative in your assessment of our different revenues and things, but knowing that decreasing a tax rate is always very easy, increasing it again is not. We can make a move if we see that there is more than we need or less than we need, we are allowed before January 1st to do an adjustment to the tax rate. That's basically in the North Carolina law, that we can do that. I would actually propose that at this point in time, we leave our tax rate where it is, and if we need to do a reassessment of it, we can do it in November, December, if things are a lot worse than you're thinking they're going to be. And again, you have been conservative. To me, it would be better to have the two cents remain. We didn't set it as an objective to reduce our tax rate.
I want to address the changing of the tax rate. That's something, another thing that is a horror story, because motor vehicle taxes are collected every month and paid out, and that changing a tax rate, I would not recommend y'all even considering that. You said it one July, and that's what it is, you live with the consequence of it. I do not know, it may be in the general statute, just like the interim budget is, but I have not been able to find anybody that has the practical experience doing that. I do not know how it's done, and nobody has been able to communicate with me how to do that. In fact, the readings that I've done is that those types of things are complex, and they only serve to confuse the public. There is enough consternation over whatever the tax rate is, and I would not recommend that you add another layer of explanation on changing the tax rate to, you just said it, let it be.
Well, again, then, I would just propose that we keep our tax rate at 20. The point is that, you know, we want to look, we do want to be as robust as possible going into needing to borrow money, then if we have extra funds, advance to the fund balance. Again, we didn't set it as a target or an objective to reduce the tax rate. Given uncertainty, I would feel more comfortable keeping it where we are, which was revenue neutral last year, so it means that once again, we're just carrying on with basically the same amount year in, year out. I'm still a little bit puzzled about paying for all the police from the general fund. Do I understand what you're basically saying is, it's simply because we don't need to do the manipulation? Because again, it's like you would just be moving money from one place to the other. It doesn't actually do anything to any fund balance.
That's correct.
Okay. And I had, oh, the one other thing was your comment about no capital improvement plan yet, and I understand that. There was one thing that was very useful in that, and that was just sort of seeing vehicles that were according to schedule. So do I understand right that everything that we had scheduled in vehicles that needed to happen this year did fit in this budget?
And you have to realize that three of those vehicles are for the three police officers. So the other vehicles were replacement vehicles in accordance with our existing replacement policy, which, oh, by the way, I do want to point out something. There's a reason why our replacement vehicle policy is at seven years or 70,000 miles. Those assets are depreciated according to a schedule, an accounting schedule. Vehicles are six years, Zero Valley is six years. So they add nothing to our balance sheet in term of a capital asset. There's a reason for other end, especially in the case of all those vehicles. When they get to seven years, that life cycle here on the beach, they need to be sent on down. down the road, because they age them. They're rusting out, and the maintenance, uh, cost of them are prohibited to keep band-aided to get.
I have one other question. You have a merit pool of 3%. I haven't been able this year to, to really look as detailed as normal, but is this, is this something that the county and other municipalities are using? In the past, I've seen that, you know, the county was using 3, others. We just did an adjustment for everybody to bring them into a new level that was, you know, pegging them to what I would call competition, uh, the analysis of jobs and everything. 3% seems a little bit generous in a difficult time like this, without knowing what any of the other municipalities or counties do.
Well, the personnel policy that we adopted, one of the reasons probably gotten behind so bad was that we didn't, uh, on an annual basis, do discount. And that merit pool is, is based on merit. It doesn't mean that everybody's going to get a 3% raise.
I know that.
You know, and, uh, you know, no, I do not know what everybody else is going to do. I do know that one of the reasons that we thought where we were is because of compression caused by, we didn't do anything for a number of years, and then awarded bonuses that were cash payouts that didn't do anything for the salary levels, so people were compressed. This is merely an attempt to, um, keep pace with good personnel practice over time.
I would propose that it be cut, that it be cut down. I think that, I think that the idea of keeping pace with everybody now that we've established is the right thing, but I question whether 3% merit this year is the right number to have with what's going on.
Well, I would, I would counter that by saying that we're in day 82 of a global pandemic, and the people that are working for you are the ones that are taking care of business, and they need to have something to look forward to. And I know there's the, there's the opinion, well, lucky to have a job. That's true. However, um, I think that as a management tool, that you should consider providing some type of incentive beyond coming to work and having the real and present danger of what they're doing on day by day in front of them.
I would still propose that it be reduced. I would propose that it be reduced to one and a half percent, and we can see where things are, again, later in the year. If things are better than what the estimates were, then there can be additional consideration. Again, I'm, I'm expecting, I'm just expecting, based on my understanding of what's going on in some of my industry stuff, and I know industry is not government, however, in times of crisis, everybody starts to behave the same. They have basically already made decisions to cut pay raises significantly by half, two-thirds, or even 100% to have no raises. We cut this in half to one and a half percent, wait and see where we are, getting towards, getting after season, and see where occupancy tax is. I think that's a fair way of addressing it. I'm assuming that other municipalities are going to be less generous in the merit, merit raise area than they were in the past couple of years when everything was pretty hunky-dory, because they're going to wait and see what's going on. And of course, bigger municipalities and counties are just hoping to keep people, which that is not something we need to worry about. We can't afford to not keep people. We run so lean as it is.
Anyone else got any comments?
I've got a couple of questions. Are there, this is, Lee David, are there occasions on the beach? I know we're touting the FEMA money right now, but I feel like, in this, my opinion, that, that beach is tremendously important. It's not up for debate to keep it sound and, and nourished, it's, it's just not our option. I feel like there are occasions that we would not get reimbursed for damage to the beach strand, and I don't think the money should be moved. I think we should keep adding to it as long as we can, and, um, and God forbid we need, and I hope we never need it, but if we don't need it, if we spend it, maybe we could pay down some debt or something. The, as far as the tax rate goes, I'm 100% with Pat. It's, it would be very hard to get that back, and we're in a time where I feel like that we're going to lose some occupancy tax money and some revenue. I don't think, um, I don't think, in my opinion, it's a good time to do that, um, because it would be very hard to, to reverse. And nobody's going to like it if we take it and then we reverse it, because we screwed up for some reason. As far as the merit, um, the 3% merit, I got, and I was on the tail end of this, and I wasn't privy to much information when it was thrown on me in January for a vote. I got a ton of blowback on that math study, and I mean a lot. There were some people that were hurt, there were some people that were happy, and I remember the days where some, some bonuses were given at the end of the year, and I am 100% for rewarding people for doing, doing outstanding work and, and patting them on the back and giving them those bonuses at, at a certain time of the year. Gives them something to look forward to. If, if the money's there, then I'm all for that, provided they've done a good job and served the town well. I'm 100% for giving somebody a bonus. I think there's some people that, that didn't get a raise, that deserve a raise. If we do give a merit increase, I would just ask that we be privy to where it's going to go, and, and maybe some kind of explanation of why, or because some people were hurt. That's my opinions on those three items, and that's just, that's just what it is, that's my opinion.
Anybody else?
Woody.
You're next, go ahead.
I think we've got three that want to keep the taxes where they're at, because we don't know yet what we're facing, okay? I, I made a couple more phone calls today, like, I looked here and, and like, when we put in, uh, three new officers, five new vehicles. I hear where you're coming from on the depreciation deal. So I, I just called just for my own, so I would know. I talked with a lady at the police department at Ocean Isle, and, uh, basically the help we need is for 100 days out of the year, okay? During the summer, a little extra help. They've got certified law enforcement and non-certified law enforcement that they hire through the summer, okay? And I think you go there and you add three officers, it doesn't matter where the money comes from, okay? You add three officers and you add five vehicles, you're, you're increasing the bureaucracy. No crime wave on the beach, never has been, and never will, okay? And you know, this is just me personally, okay? And I, I, I have a lot more people that feel the same way. You're right around here, and, uh, especially, I watched the last couple of weeks, and I had a guy call me, said, Gerald, I got a ticket for 43 and a 30. No warning, no nothing else, just, we'll give you a ticket. You understand? Now, why couldn't that have been a warning ticket? Number one, you understand? And, uh, I see them, you know, they can't spend any time on the beach, because it's easy to sit beside the road in an air-conditioned truck and look at a radar screen. I even seen one on the causeway doing that, you know? If we're going to be a police state, people drive for a happy day and get here, then they're going to get a speeding ticket, you know? Really, that goes, that goes against my brain? You know, I know the police have got a job to do, but it'd been a whole lot easier to warn that person first. Wouldn't have hurt anything, wouldn't hurt one thing. You know, and I, I think, I understood the last meeting there, you had one that's getting out of here, that was, he resigned or something, or he's leaving? One officer.
Yes, sir.
Good business, glad he's gone, because all I've heard from him was complaints, okay? And, and, uh, but I think we ought to look at hiring some part-time help, just through the summer, because I can't see adding three officers to the police, to the police department. All you're doing is trying to grow them, you know? And I know this is your, you know, this is the time you get all you can, I understand that, it's, it's, it's the budget, you understand? But we need to keep in mind what's going on here, that we yet don't, you know, in the pandemic. It's not a time to be spending a whole lot of extra money. It's not a time to be giving tax goods. It's not a time to be raising big merit pay. David, I heard what you said about the help and everything there, but if I recognize it right, we getting nobody outside of this building, so they're not, it's not like they're putting their life in danger for us, okay?
Well...
No, no, let me finish, okay? That's my opinion on that, okay? I hear what you're saying, but you've got to listen to the other folks out here, say, we're the one to get the black, the blowback, you understand? We're sitting here and they say, Gerald, look, I can't even get nobody to come to the door, you understand? And, you know, I'm hearing this every day, you see? So, so, uh, as far as merit pay, I mean, we just had this pay increase, I'd say knock it out. I mean, you know, I don't think, you know, if you, if you want to give one and a half percent, I think that's well in line, you know? And, you know, because we just, you know, that, you know, I think that's where we need to be, you know, at the most, you know? We appreciate everything that everybody does, but at the same time, I ain't seen nobody doing right here for me. Seems like everybody's pulling a pretty decent salary, you know? And I think sometimes you need to first say, where's it coming from? Because see, it's just like, everyone's sitting up here, we're paying in, just like all these other 20-some-hundred people, we're paying in. You never paid one dime in, all you do is stay out. So reverse those shoes we're down to and look at it from where we're coming, okay? So we got to keep the budget, we got, we got to watch the money. We need some money set aside to, hey, if it increases our fund balance a little bit, I think that's great, okay? And, but, you know, I, I don't want to cut the taxes right now, I don't think it is the right thing to do. I know we say, well, got all this FEMA money, is it in the checkbook? Is the FEMA money in the checkbook?
With an approved, with an approved project worksheet, the banks have stepped up to the plate, and they are willing to loan money based on the approved FEMA worksheet as good as a federal note.
Okay, but what we have to do, we got to see that it comes through.
Well, I mean, I want to speak, I want to speak to that, though, because you have to understand that the FEMA money just doesn't come to you and you go spend it, you have to spend it first.
You got to spend your own money first, and then reimburse.
And then it's reimbursed.
We're, we understand that, okay? So you know, that's my five cents worth.
Mr. Woody? Well, I agree with everybody, so far with everybody up here about the tax increase, I would prefer we bang that into savings and nothing else, uh, because the public will forget that we cut the tax rate when we have to increase it a couple of years from now. I'd rather keep it the same and then put that money into savings. I also agree about saving for sand. I mean, I think we need to keep putting money aside so that that day comes where there's damage to the beach and it's not FEMA reimbursable, that we've got some money set aside to, to fix the beach, because we've all said before, yeah, that's why people come here is to beach. So I, I think whatever we can put aside each year into a savings account, you know, reserve fund, whatever you want to call it, that, that just prepares us for the future. The merit raise, I mean, I've managed folks for 36 years, and I know what not getting their raise does to morale, and what it does to people going to look for another job, and one of the things you have when you have a small environment like you do here, where there's not a lot of opportunities for advancement, is the way people get advancement is they leave and go to another job somewhere else, and the cost of hiring somebody, the cost of overtime, of getting somebody else to do that person's job outweighs the salary increases that you probably should have had. So, like I said, I've had 36 years' experience managing that, and I've been through times when, when, when we've had to say zero raises, and like I said, turnover picks up, morale goes to heck, people say, fine, I'll just do the bare minimum. So I, I am in favor of having a merit pool. Once again, David, as you said, that doesn't guarantee everybody gets a 3% raise, there's probably some people who may deserve more than 3%, there's, there's some people who deserve zero, but 3% is the pool that you get to use. I, I am in favor of that, because I have seen the downside of not doing it. As far as the policemen, I, I'm the one that asked that we put three into the budget to see what it would do from a cost standpoint. If you do the math, I mean, I'll just ran the math real quick, I asked Jeremy before I got up here, we got eight officers, count Frank and Jeremy. At 40 hours a week, that's 320 hours available to you to work. We got, on seven by 24 covers, we got 168 hours we got to cover. So we're barely able to cover two people on each shift if everybody's here. And in the summertime, we need, I feel like we need more police in the summertime. We don't need that many in the wintertime, but we definitely need more in the summertime. So I am in favor of doing something to have more police coverage during the summertime, whether it's hiring part-time people, or whether it's hiring three full-time people and knowing that in the wintertime, we probably overstaffed a little bit. I, I think with things like, you know, we had a break-in cars at the pier last weekend, this is a seven-mile island, trying to, trying to cover both ends of the island with two people. A shift is tough and nothing else. I agree there's not a crime wave, and I think part of it is the fact that we do have some police coverage. I remember when I first came here, at night, the police rode up and down the street and shined a light up under your house to see if anything was going on. Well, I haven't seen that in 100 years. So I, I, I think on a small island like this, particularly, it's real easy to come across a waterway and break into your house. I, I think a police presence is important, so if, if I have my druthers, I'd say hire somebody for 100 days, but it may not be possible. But I, I do think we need more, more coverage so that we can cover on the beach, so we can, uh, look at golf people who are not, uh, following the golf cart ordinances. So I am in favor of spending more money on police. Thank you. Mr. Mike?
Well...
You're it.
I'm it. I'm going to disagree with my learned colleagues here when it comes to the tax increase. I've been asking for the tax decrease for the past three years, and the math has always shown that the town could absorb that tax decrease. And, and the reason why I'm in favor of the tax decrease is because the people who paid that money, that, that tax increase came because of the Central Reach project, and the people willingly voted for the Central Reach project. We would have never borrowed 12 million dollars if we knew that we were going to get the FEMA reimbursement money, so we, we got an extra, we got $4 million back from FEMA. That money should have been given back to the people who paid the taxes. That hasn't changed. So, simply put, the $256,000 that David spoke about when he had the, the slides, that we don't put into the beach fund this year, that covers that 200 tax reduction. It's, it's simple math, and I think we should have done it, and the people should have had that benefit for the last two tax years as well. So I'm in favor of the tax decrease. It's as simple as that. It's as simple as that. When it comes to the raise, I, I'm in favor of giving people a raise that is competitive with everybody else. So if, if three percent is the right number, I'm all for it. If it's two percent, then that's what it should be as well. And doing that will keep us and keep from doing a compression because people will get their raise as, as you go along. It's just, what's the right number? I, I have no, no problem giving people a raise. I am in the, unenviable position, since my background is twenty, uh, twenty-five years in law enforcement, I, I just cannot see how we can afford to add three police officers to, to the town. If you look at page three with police expenses, the budget this year was seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars, and I'm just rounding things off. The proposed budget is one million, three hundred thousand dollars. I, we're, we're talking about being worried about what the pandemic is going to do to our economics. How can we absorb a fifty, almost a fifty percent, a hundred percent increase in, in the cost? I, I just can't eat in good conscience do that. As a, as a former police officer, I, I want these guys to be safe. But as a person who's trying to protect the purse strings of the people who live on the island and pay the taxes, it, it just doesn't, it's not justified by what, the numbers and what's going on. I, I did, I did a quick look, and, and again, I, I, I hate to be in this position. But if you look at the last year's police activity reports, we, we didn't get it for April, we didn't get it for May, so I did it from last May up to, up to March. If you take out the calls where it's a business check or a keep check, disregard those, that's nothing. The total number of calls of every other category that are listed there, we had eighteen-hundred-and-fifty-one. If you do quick math and you just had one officer on every tour for thirty days of a month, you have ninety tours a month. You multiply that by twelve, anyway, divide the total number of tours, one police officer tour, into those total number of jobs, it comes to less than two a shift. Safety-wise, they need, they, they could need help. Work-wise, it's not justified, so. Again, I, I apologize for, I, I, I just hate, I just hate doing this, but I, I just can't, I can't walk that into that. I don't know what we've done as a town, I know we haven't done anything since I've been on the board to see about part-time, summertime work. They do that in a lot of communities, uh, you know, up and down the east coast. But I would be in favor of having help in the summertime. And, uh, you know, I don't know how we go about it, and we should have done it earlier because the season's already here. But we should really do something about that for next year, so that when we're talking about the budget, we'll, we'll have a better idea of how to adequately police this island without going within, increasing the budget by almost six-hundred thousand dollars.
And, and I, I do, Gerald and I had this conversation this afternoon. Not defending David, we told David to put three in there, or at least I asked him to put three in there. Yeah, I, I'm not saying, but...
I'm not ridiculing anybody or saying it is foolish, I'm just saying, you know, looking at the, at the numbers and what we're doing, where we were, this is, again, we've all, you know. The, the other thing is, believe me, I agree that the idea of putting this large amount of money, just almost six million dollars now, right? A little over six million dollars when you took a B, B part fund and the beach, the beach fund, we have six million dollars. And the idea was to build this up because at some point, we're going to have to do the Central Reach Project too, and, and well, now we're going to have, our beach is going to be much, much wider when we get rid, when we do the FEMA and get reimbursed. It's going to be much, much wider than it was when the Central Reach Project was completed. So we don't have to, you know, we can look, our children will have children on the beach by the time that, that sand is gone. So the need to keep a large amount of money there, I, I don't see it. But there is definitely a need to keep a good-sized amount of money there because we do have the yearly, and every year, every year, we wind up putting more money into the Lockwood folly because the government keeps cutting down their share. I mean, we went from getting fifty percent from the county to twenty-five percent. We keep getting less money from the government than we did before. And everybody, whenever it gets filled up, nobody goes to Bonningtown, even though dead people who make their living out of that, they come here, right? And they're a few people. And we wind up putting up the money, we put up a hundred thousand here, two hundred thousand there, six hundred thousand there. So we need, we need a considerable amount of money, but we don't have to keep building this baby up. So, uh, I would say take the two-fifty that's supposed to go into it this year, reduce the taxes because the people deserve it. Let us do, you know, do what we have to do when it comes to police and think about that. I, I think there's nothing, we do worry about raising the tax after long, right? The worst thing you can do is hire some person and then say, next year, we can't afford to keep you. So we, we have to make the decision that makes sense for this year and the next year and the next year and the next year when it comes to hiring people. So, that's, that's my take on this budget.
Well, one of my questions, and, and I hadn't addressed police yet, because again, we did ask to see what it did to the budget with three. But one of my questions was, what will we get with three more officers? And in particular, given that a lot of our problems are on the beach, okay? Let's, 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 we all know it's not just problems with dogs, okay? And the beach rangers are great driving up and down and filling in holes, but they're not really stopping dogs on the beach illegally during the hours they're not supposed to be there, off-leash in the hours they are allowed to be there. We have no alcohol on the beach, and I'm not going to say one way or another on that, however, what does bother me is glass on the beach. And so it's not just alcohol, it's bottles of alcohol. So there are things that we don't enforce at all. And these are things that do have to do with beach safety. And I don't believe the beach rangers will ever be able to do that. We need police on the beach. So how do we get police on the beach in terms of, you know, from beginning of May until the end of September, basically, because the shoulder seasons are important? And versus what does an additional officer do in terms of patrol and safety? Um, you know, it's sort of, what does one extra officer, two extra officers, three extra officers bring in terms of patrol ability? And as we said, taking care of the enforcement issues that we all face, which are mostly moving violations, a lot of them to do with golf carts, but also speeding. And speeding all the way up and down the island, not just up to the pier or up to the eight-hundred block, because I rarely see anything pass there. And they build up speed as they keep going. So we have problems beyond where they're usually looking, just like the golf carts. I, I'm beginning to think there's the wild, wild west. You get past a certain point and everything breaks down in terms of the way golf carts behave and drivers. Again, the dogs, again, the alcohol, but, you know, we have parking, we have moving violations, and then we have strand safety, which is pets. And things like glass and litter. You know, so, so what does one extra policeman, two extra policemen, three extra policemen bring to those? Or what does hundred-day help bring to those? How does that get handled?
So three extra officers would add an extra officer to every shift. Right now, we have one officer that works by himself or herself, day shift, night shift. And by adding three, you're adding one to each shift, so there'll always be two here for the vast majority. I mean, you're going to have emergencies where at five-thirty, somebody calls out sick, and you may be back down to one for a night, but for the most part, you're going to have two. So you're going to double your efforts and enforcement actions. And, you know, out here, on one side, out here, we're writing too many tickets, but on the other side, out here, we're not doing enough enforcement. And we literally have one officer who's out there doing all the things that you just named, from dogs, and, and I know that there's not a lot of enforcement on that or lack thereof, but it's because we have one officer who's literally trying to spread across all of that at one time. So you talk about an island being seven miles long, and it is, but I actually went through and, I don't have the number in front of me, I wish I'd brought it down. There's actually like twenty-some miles of roadway, actual paved roadway, it's probably twenty-some miles. You know, there's what, twenty, eight-hundred houses or something like that? The hundred days of summer are important, and yes, we're, we're crowded, we're busy during that time. But it's the other two-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year when we've got one officer who's looking after twenty-five-hundred houses, trying to make sure they don't get broken into. And if he's on the west end and somebody gets broken into, that's, there's one way on, one way off the beach. That's right there, that bridge, if you've got two officers, you're doubling that effort to try to locate that person. I mean, it's just, I can't even, I don't know, I can't even begin to explain to you how important adding a second officer is. And I know it's expensive, it's a huge, not, to be sitting in that position is a huge expense to the town, and I get that. But I'm telling you, sitting in the seat and, and working in this department, three officers, you've, you've got to have it. I mean, adding one makes the shift lopsided, you can, you can overwork that person. You know, you make them work every day, it doesn't do anything. Adding two is kind of the same thing, you need to get the shifts even so you can get two out there all the time. The part-time stuff that was mentioned, it is doable, it is, other beaches do it. But you got to realize that you still have to go through the same background investigation. You still got to go through all that, vet the officers. If you're getting officers that are already scoring somewhere else, they're usually pretty good. But honestly, before I give them a gun and a badge and a set of handcuffs and the power and authority to arrest you or take your life if, if their life is in danger, I won't vet that person. And to just hire them over here for a hundred days a year to do that, you don't really get to know them, if you know what I mean. You, you know, you're trying to hire them for the summer, you stick them out there and then they're gone. If they get offered a full-time job somewhere else, you've lost them and you're right back to the entire process again. So if you can hire full-time officers, actually get them vested with the town, they're more likely to stay, you're not having this complete turnover all the time. I know Ocean Isle does it, you're talking about the part-time help, they do do that for their beach, that's, their beach patrol is part-time officers. They still have thirteen full-time officers working the streets. So Sunset Beach has fifteen, and I know we're comparing apples to oranges, but we are the only agency left in this county that's working one officer by himself.
Sunset's a big area.
Sun, sun, and sun, I agree, and like I said, we're comparing apples to oranges, Sunset's different. Ocean Isle's not that much different. Their, their population is six-hundred-and-thirty-one, hours is six-forty-seven, it's just about the same. But they do, they have thirteen full-time officers that work the streets. Their, their part-time help that they hire is, um, is for the summer, and they do that, do that specifically for beach patrol.
So they have thirteen full-time with their Ocean Isle?
Yes, sir, they do.
And then in the summertime, they add more?
They do, they add more to their, just to do their beach patrol.
Small island too.
Sir.
Smaller island.
Yes, sir, I don't know their square miles, but...
Jeremy, what would be the minimum you could work with to get a uniformed officer on the beach that could actually enforce the ordinances that we have? I would like to see your warning first, but I mean, the beach rangers are just not getting it done. People just ignore them, basically, they don't, they can't, you can't put them in harm's way, you can't, you can't ask them to run somebody off the beach. They can just politely ask. I, I've seen instances where, I've seen them tell people, you know, you're not supposed to have your dog out here on a leash, and then ride off, and then they just, they stay. And I've seen cabanas on the beach, I've seen holes on the beach, and they're riding up and down the beach, and I see them riding up and down the beach, and I see them talking to people. But unfortunately, a lot of people don't pay them any attention, and then, then they have to call, I assume they call you if they run into, to, to something that they just can't handle, but I, I'm, I really believe we need a uniformed officer on the beach. Not to, not to run people off and all that, but I mean, to, to enforce the ordinances, to, to get the dog. You know, you need to leave right now with your dog because it's not allowed, and you need to, you need to go now, and you, and you mean it, and you're, we're going to haul you out of here if you don't. And they can't do that. So during the summer, you know, six months, five months, six months, whatever, the big, you know, when most people are here, what, how can we do that? How can we, I know we have to add somebody, and we're, I'm honestly, we're looking at losing possibly, possibly three. I mean, you got Jessica and, and Brandon, I mean, he's helping us out already, and those are already officers that are in, that are budgeted. You're looking at losing them possibly, and, and you're looking at trying to get some more, so how, how, what's the plan on getting something done?
Well, and not to knock the beach ranger program, but we would have to...
It's getting beat up pretty good. Getting beat on pretty good, I can tell you that. I'm going to tell you, they're, they're doing what they were asked to do, they were doing the policies that we had in place when we first went out there and told people, get off to, off the beach, get your dogs, get off the beach, we were told to lighten up. They, they do do their job, and they do their job very well. I keep up with it. That, that program was given to the building inspections department because the police department didn't want it. It's public record. And it was, it was put, it, it, it's, it's a program that was placed over us, I don't know if it's the third or fourth year, but I'm pretty upset because I've heard they're not enforcing the rules when I've got page after page of documentation where they are. But the policies were pretty clear. As far as cabanas, there was even a conversation earlier this year where there hasn't been a problem with cabanas in a while because of the policies that we put in place. Now, I might be a cabana out there, but that's like somebody speeding. If you see somebody speeding, that don't mean the police ain't, ain't doing their job, that just means you just saw somebody doing their job. They're speeding. As far as them interacting, there's a public relations aspect that when the police were doing it, was looked, was frowned on something horribly, because I was here. Because the public relations was, was that we were, we were being a police state out there on the beach. I, for one, wouldn't bother me one bit. My pay was never increased a dime to take that program up. What will bother me is the fact that we have volunteers out there that's been doing it for years, and now we're here and they're not doing their jobs, and, and that they're not doing a good job. I, I'm going to tell you, since that program's inception up until right now, I've never heard of one bad thing about that program. It's been bragged on year after year, it's been bragged on in, by board members. This is the first year I've ever heard anything about it.
I'm not saying that they, they're not doing their jobs, I'm saying that people are taking them, the, the attitude of the general public are taking them, you know, lightly, and they're still not listening.
The other option is, the other option is, is that when we go out there and tell them to, to get the dog off the beach, and they don't take the dog off the beach, is to call the police. But what we did was, we had a policy. The policy was, you ask them to remove the dog, if they didn't remove the dog, then you came back and told them they had to move the dog. And if they didn't, then we called the police. That policy was presented to the board, and the board agreed that that was probably the best course back more than once in a public meeting. But what I'm saying is, is that, is that the, the, the program was at the police. The police did it at one time, I believe, for you. And, and, and because of the rhetoric then, it got moved over to us, and now it's going to be moved back, and we're saying that holes aren't being filled, and I've got documentation, they document every hole that gets filled. We're saying that they're, that the dogs aren't, I know for a fact that we hand out leashes for, so people can, can get into compliance, I know we forgive out leashes this year. I know that we've had, how many people that we've asked to remove their dogs and remove their dog? But if someone removes their dog and brings it right back, unless you're going to arrest them, they're going to do the same thing with the police. They'll bring it right back.
That's what I'm getting at.
Well, they're going to do the same thing with the police. I mean, that's not saying that they're not doing their job, that's no more than saying that the police don't catch a park car than nobody's catching a park car.
I'm not saying that they're not doing their job, I've seen them stop and interact with people over and over and time and time again. But the people, a lot of people listen, and a lot of people, you know, they're really nice to everybody and, and they're cordial, and they do stop and talk to people, I've seen it time and time again. But I also get the, the blowback from some of the public that, that these people just come right back and do the same thing. And I don't want to put these, these four gals in harm's way, you know, with some, some, I can't say it, but somebody that's not wanting to listen to them and, and God forbid, gets angry or, and something happened to one of them, that's, that's where I'm going.
Well, let me, let me tell you...
They need to get a ticket.
Well, I didn't get anything, so let me tell you about it. So beach ranger program goes with the police department, thank God. Cause it's, it's a lot of work. It takes, it, it, during the summer, if, we have to take our staff and we have to dedicate a lot of time and effort into this. It takes, and, and during the summer, if we have to take our staff, and we have to dedicate a lot of time and effort into this. There's gonna be some time and effort being dedicated already that y'all don't know about. It's gonna be dedicated to them all. And I, I, we still have to do our jobs, so if you want to go to the police department, by all means, I'm not against that. That's something town managers. But what I don't think should happen is that the guys, that the guys and the girls that we've put out there, we don't have just girls, we've got guys out there. The guys and girls that we put out there don't need to hear things like they're not doing their job, and they're doing their job, because we need, we wanna see more police officers, we wanna see, we, we, we really should not say that.
It's the impact that it, the impact, the impact over the last year and a half has dropped. The impact the first couple of years, I think, was greater. I don't know if it is we have a different group of renters, or the renters now know exactly how it operates with the rangers. But their impact of getting, I would say, immediate recognition of, yes, thank you, you're right, we'll do it, is dropping. I mean, they are very good at getting the holes filled in, which is great for the, the turtle issue, and so people don't, you know, step in things. But in terms of alcohol on the beach, glass on the beach, and dogs on the beach, I think that there is much more scoff law going on now than there was a couple of years ago. Again, I don't know why their impact is not as great on those as it was, but it's not. I ran into one today. I very nicely asked some people, please take their dog off the beach. It was during hours. I walked by, didn't know they had a dog, until the dog jumped out and started yapping. I turned around, and the rudeness I got, the belligerence I got, the, I'm paying a lot of money to stay here. This dog isn't bothering anybody. I should be able to have it on the beach, if I'm claiming it's our law. I, it was about three iterations before I finally said, look, I'm a commissioner, I know what the law is. It's a safety issue, this dog needs to be off the beach until later in the evening. But it is a difficult situation when you are just a member of the public or a beach ranger, which is not viewed the same as a policeman, to actually address somebody who wants to be belligerent.
But you're talking to a co-직원 officer who's living the beach ranger's life every day.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I understand exactly what you're talking about, but still, I do my job.
But the biggest concerns we have received over the past year or so from our public has been about dogs. Dogs on the beach off the leash, and dogs on the beach when they don't belong. And those are the ones that seem to be the most difficult to get people to react.
Not to change the subject, but Jeremy, none of this is directed at you personally.
No, I don't, I don't take it personally.
Because, because here, here's the deal. We get, we get all the blowback from the system.
I agree.
You know what I'm saying? It ain't about, and not about beating nobody up here, and I hear everybody, you know what I'm saying? And, and, uh, you know, so I just want you aware of that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
None of this is, is nothing personal. We got five different ones speaking, and, and we all want to get there just as easily as possible. But one thing I did miss out, David just said on the vacuum truck, we're ready to replace that. Needs to be replaced. I remember you told me about a year ago that there was, that it was really starting to do some issues with it.
That's right.
But now, didn't you also say, Chris, that, that, that like, it could be, it was a deal that we can get that thing traded, get out from under it, and the new one, that will also have to cost something, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's, and I.
What's, what's budgeted in there is basically a, a trade-in valued on the lease purchase, yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it'll be going out the door, and they're gonna be, um, still trying to have it. It's getting to be cancer legally, we don't want that for it.
I got you, I got you. I understand that. I understand. All right.
Any more comments, questions?
Uh, I just, the, this, this goes without a store location. We all agreed that, yes, we should borrow money for two, and David, you're not proposing we also borrow money for three? Yeah, yeah, we did four, we're on three, we do two, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to investigate, uh, once we get the vote passed, to go ahead and move toward borrowing the money for two, and at the same time, go ahead and borrow the money for three. That's currently being taken out of fund now.
And I understand, we've all agreed that money will never be cheaper. But if we are gonna borrow for two of those, for both of those, with the additional debt, does that also look detrimental when we have to, does it look more detrimental when we have to go out and borrow money for sand on the beach waiting for reimbursement?
Those are enterprise funds. The viability of the system is what stands for, for the solvency of that enterprise fund. Borrowing the money for the special obligation bond, again, that's basically underwritten by the equivalent of a treasury note. That approved PDU is underwritten by the, the, the FEMO, the quote from the bankers that I talked to. It's as good as treasury note.
So if we borrow for, for both, do you have an estimate of what our annual cost would be to pay off?
I haven't, I haven't done that. I'm, I'm thinking you'd need to borrow about four million dollars, which if you wanted to compare it to what was, what was, um, what was done before, you know, you have the option on how many years you wanna borrow, if y'all would have that. Previously, you'd borrowed fifteen years, excuse me, that the seven hundred thousand dollar note was retired on. That, that debt was sixteen dollars, but it's a different time, and it's a different industry rate. So y'all have the opportunity to shop that.
Jeremy, I'm gonna jump back to you there. I didn't, I didn't get an answer. But, um, my, my question is, I'm gonna rephrase it. What can we do, can we do anything to support the beach ranger program when they have difficulty dealing with somebody that's just absolutely not gonna listen? And, and, and provide that enforcement? What, what can, what if anything can we do?
The support is just.
By the time they call, they're gone.
Yeah, the, the support is just a phone call away. And then, and then, like you said, I tell them, but if, if they make the phone call, and the person complies and leaves, then have you not gotten the same result?
True.
So, you know, ask that. And I think your first question was, what, what could we do to do it? And to answer that, it would either take, one, a lot of overtime, or two, and if we couldn't do it this year, but it would take hiring those part-time officers at the beginning of the summer, with the explanation that, you know, your, your job is this, your days are this, and you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to start those exercises for me to feel comfortable with them by January, February, to, to actually, because I, I wanna vet those officers before we even... That's a lot of responsibility for you to give a person that's putting out here. And our names, my name especially, but, but everybody sitting in this room, our names attached to them in every action they take out there.
I just, um, would have the question of what type of, of professional law enforcement officer would you get be able to recruit when you told them that their, uh, their job description was basically dog control? And I'm not being facetious there, I'm just, you know, if you're gonna put somebody out there, what, what you gonna give?
We've got a lot of retired police officers around the room. You know, and they may look, they, they may love being the dog, dog catcher.
Well, I would say it's dog and alcohol. And again, that's if we're trying, I, I'm not supposed to say anything. The alcohol isn't what bothers me. It's the bottles and the glass on the beach that I find worrisome.
Do you drink on the beach back?
No.
Okay.
Not this beach. In my youth, in my youth, other beaches, yes.
If you could provide a, a dog hotline number on that beach, and if you're calling me.
On the sign of their dog hotline.
Because I get, I get that, well, it's not about parking, this is about.
There's, there's one resident that calls me every time this happens. I'm like, what do you want me to do, chase the dog?
There you go. All right.
Jeremy, are you some way to turn?
Oh, she's gonna turn.
Well, we have, well, we have.
Don't, don't we?
No, because.
Don't we have to?
David's gonna be.
Give David some direction on what to put into the budget message?
Correct.
Well, I'm just simply saying, nobody said anything, so. The same, you wanna go there?
No.
Think David's heard where we all stand, but let's give him, give him clear directions.
All right, guess, we'll, I'll start it this way. I would make a motion, if that we want, that we leave the two percent reduction in taxes in, in the proposed budget. Do you agree, disagree, simple? We discussed it, it's simple.
We leave it.
I've got a motion on the floor. I need a second for you to discuss it, revisit it. Not hearing any second.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Say again. Repeat.
I make a motion that we direct the town manager to put into the budget message in this year's budget a two percent reduction in taxes.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
Looking for a second.
Any alternative? Somebody has to.
Yeah, yeah, I got a motion on the floor.
May I?
Sure.
One of the, one of the considerations that, not from the board, that came forth and in discussions with other managers, the budget officers, was, um, the amount of tax collected. And our current tax collection rate is ninety-nine point zero four percent. Will what's going on now affect that, that ability to collect taxes? I don't know. I, I absolutely do not know. But I would offer that up for discussion, or, or for your thoughts, on if we hold the tax rate the same, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna collect the same amount of taxes, because some people may not be able to pay. And I know that Mr. Sullivan's point is, is totally different. But from that aspect of it, maybe if you only collect eighty, eighty percent on your, on your twenty cent tax rate, you're basically, you know, collecting eighteen percent, eighteen cents.
I'm still gonna motion on the floor. Need a second to move forward. I don't hear a second. Floor, floor's gonna be open for another motion.
I move that we reduce the merit increase from three percent to one and a half percent at this point in time.
Is there any second?
No second.
Discussion.
I just wanna point out, I'm simply making that number as a guess of what's gonna be happening as people are addressing the reality of reduced revenues next year. I don't like doing this, but again, we get later in the year, we can revisit things if we end up better than we thought we were gonna be on occupancy tax. I think if occupancy tax ends up being strong, then our concern about our collection of our property tax will, will be less as well, but we won't know that till November. And without knowing what other municipalities in the county are doing right now, um, I'm, again, guessing that they're not gonna do their usual three or four percent, that they're gonna also do less.
David, do you have a ballpark figure about what the three percent pool?
I, I've always, it's a little bit more than that now. I've always said a million dollar payroll, uh, three percent of that's thirty grand. You know, if you knock it down to one point five, it's fifteen thousand dollars. I think our payroll's one point two.
To me?
One point two.
One point two, okay.
Can I take a second, man?
Can you?
Take a second, man.
Sure. That's a lot, isn't it?
Yeah.
Can you just allow it, sir?
As I recall, you can, you can, you can unsecond yourself.
I won't unsecond myself, dear. I'd like to put a motion on the board.
You gotta let this one.
You have to wait for this, wait for this one.
All right, forget a second.
Okay, we got, is anybody else wants to second the motion? If not, your motion's gonna go away.
I'd like to make a motion that we set the merit pay at two percent.
Everybody understand the motion? Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Floor's open for discussion.
Just, just on the question I asked David, well, we're, we are gonna debate here now is whether to give a thirty thousand dollar pool to pay the employees that we compliment and credit for doing terrific work, or twenty thousand.
That's right, that's right.
And I just don't, I don't see where it's worth it. Just, I, 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 I think we should leave the three percent there, so that's, that's my point.
I, I, I agree with Mike. Come in, we're, we're talking about ten thousand dollars, number one. Number two, this is a small environment with limited opportunities for advancement. Only advancement is going somewhere else. As I learned today, one of our employees got a big nice raise, going somewhere else. So not giving the annual raises will promote people looking for jobs elsewhere. I understand we don't know what everybody else is doing, but I think we can, we can always put it into the budget as three. If we have second thoughts, we can cut it back, but I'd rather put three in there as what the budget's gonna do. Then it was, as we hear what other people are doing, we can give guidance to David and say, yeah, we put three in the budget, but we're only gonna do two because everybody else is doing similar. This is a budget document. This is not a policy document. More discussion?
Albeit, I'd like to see it done a different way because of the MAP study and the, the really bad blood back I got on that. But I would also agree that we keep it in there. It makes people strive for something, but please make sure it gets where it needs to go this time.
Anyone else want to say anything for a call for the vote?
The vote was two percent, right?
Yeah, we're voting on two percent. That's what the motion is, is I understand. Is that right? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We got three.
Can I see your hands if your motion? Three, I'm, it's three to two, motion carries. Aye. Any more motions on the floor?
I move that we, that we do make the transfer into the sand fund this year that was budgeted. I know that we're taking money out of it to pay, um, for the special bond central reach, but I think that we should, uh, take the money that we had budgeted this year and put it into the sand fund. We should continue to fund that. I don't see a reason not to this year.
That's the motion on the floor.
That's the motion.
First, I just, uh, I'd just point out that, no, I guess you're okay with that. I was just thinking that this, this is a budget workshop on next year's budget, and what I had proposals in this year's budget. But I can read between the lines, I understand.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
Can I, can I make sure, can I make sure that we're, we're specific in that? Because in, in this year's budget, it is... It's actually under the, uh, the general fund expenses tab. Page one, under government body expenses. What you're saying is to transfer to the beach re-nourishment fund the budgeted amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Two hundred and thirty-five seventy-six.
Correct.
And that's, that's this year's budget.
Correct. Correct. And it's only because you put it in this, you got this in the discussion.
I guess, I, I don't agree with that, to go back to what we said, we have six million dollars in the combined now with the fund. We're taking two hundred, whatever, two hundred and seventy-nine, is that what? Is it two, two thirty-five seventy-six? Okay, we're gonna take the two thirty-five seventy-six, and we're gonna add that to it, despite the fact that I think we've agreed that we don't need the whole six million dollars anymore because the situation has changed. We, we don't need to build that, what we need to have is enough money to take care of emergencies or to dredge. We don't need six million dollars to dredge the Lockwood Falls, or to put new sand fencing up if, if it's destroyed. So I, I just think that it's, it doesn't make sense. It's putting money where, where it's not gonna be put to good use, and if we put it in there today, we're gonna take it out somewhere down the line, so it just doesn't make sense.
Any more comments, questions?
I'd, I'd one, one point to make. As of the end of last year, that number was close to six point eight million in total for this issue.
Any more comments, questions? Any none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Got three on my right. Three on my right say yes, and the two on my left is no, so the motion passes. All right. What's next?
Do we need to circle back to the tax issue? I know we, if I remember correctly, we said it was to reduce it, and we said no. Do we need to, do we need, the manager had said he wants to reduce it by two, do we need to vote to say, keep it the same?
I think what you've done provides sufficient guidance for me.
Okay.
I, I guess the last thing is we need to decide what we are going to actually move about the police.
All right. With, hopefully there's no objection, I'd like to share a comment or two about the police department. My understanding is currently you have how many approved officers on our favor?
There's, we have eight physicians on the board.
Okay. One of those, a, is desk bound, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So you got seven that are actually in patrol car on duty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Whenever we have a hurricane or type of emergency, as your emergency director, I'm gonna plead with you, commissioners, to please provide more officers, because whenever we, we don't have hurricanes year round. But when we do have a hurricane that short-lived one or two days, it's no big deal. But whenever you ask these officers to sleep over in that metal building on cots for day after day, and you got the staff cooking for them day after day, and they don't get to go to their families, it's a, it's a tough time over there, and they get worn down, and they're subject to being called back in time, and out in the rain and the wind, and, uh, I've been here whenever we had, I believe, ten, and the commissioners were about to hire eleven, and maybe did for a short period of time, backed up, and then went to nine, and now we're back to eight. And the number of homes on the island is increasing, the number of people on the island is increasing, and we are considerably bigger than the nation's island geographically, and not that maybe means anything, but I'm just trying to share my observation that in an emergency situation, we do not have adequate coverage. And whenever there is an emergency hurricane-type situation, all of our neighboring towns are grasping, trying to cover the needs just as we are, so borrowing an officer from the neighbor island or the county doesn't work, because they're all busy. And in regards to the beach, it's no secret that I try to ride the beach a couple times a week as an emergency director with the rip currents and all that kind of stuff, and get comments and whatever. I clearly understand what being said about the public not always paying attention to the beach patrol, but if you've got one policeman on duty, do, what are you gonna do? Bring that one policeman off the highways and, and go drive down the beach? Because remember, if the incident is on the west end, that police officer has to get on at eight hundred o'clock, drive slowly down the beach between the public to get to where they may be, and your island is unprotected. If you've got two police officers on duty and the same situation comes up, now you've got one police officer with twenty-two, twenty-five, or however the number is, it, it just makes no sense. We're asking more from the police department than they can comfortably do, I think, with what we've got. I'm just asking you to, please give consideration to expand the police department. That we now have. I won't make it. But anyway, that's enough said. Is there a?
I mean, last year, again, we got all the way to approving, hiring another officer to have revenue neutral, then take it away. And there had been a thought that we add one this year, see if things improve, if we need to add another the next year. I personally never quite get cutting that off. I felt that it was the right thing to do last year to add an officer, a full-time officer. I would like to see us add a full-time officer. I would ask whether we can add a full-time officer and do something next summer with a couple part-timers. Would that help the situation enough? At least it's getting us moving our department in the right direction by adding another. And then going back to last year's philosophy before it got cut, you know, add one this year, and let's then talk about adding a second one next year. But if we added one this year, and let's see what we can do next summer to get some shorter-term, have the hundred day or four month, four month, and then see what we can do, get, get, get some police presence on the beach. And I, I say this all the time, you don't have to have police presence on the beach all the time. It just needs to be there periodically so people start to say, you know what, police show up on the beach. And so maybe we do need to listen, maybe we do need to follow the rules, maybe we do need to get the dogs off the beach because it's now noon, you know, stuff like that. Random checks can do a lot, it keeps people under touch. So I would actually move that we, we authorize hiring another officer and have the chief attempt to get a couple, if it's a hundred days or four months or whatever, to cover next summer, and that that be the direction we take.
I can make, I can make a motion.
I, I move that we authorize hiring an additional officer and that we also authorize hiring two summer police officers for next summer.
Part-time officer.
Summer, summer officer, yeah, part-time officer.
Could I, could I suggest that instead of making it, authorizing it to, that we investigate the hiring of part-time officers for next summer? This way, we're not locking ourselves into doing it, we'll find out if it, if it's feasible and if it would work, and then we can do it.
So hire one and then study?
We hire a police officer and study the benefits, the feasibility of part-time officers for next summer.
And Jeremy had given us a, I need to know this by January.
Right, right, by January.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jeremy, are you running eight-hour SIS for Toyota? We rent gloves.
Did, did you make a motion?
I move that we, I, I move that we authorize the addition of a police officer to staff. Do you want to have two motions? And that we investigate, we investigate the option of hiring part-time officers for next summer.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Only, only point I want to make, because I'm afraid I might have to vote no on this one, is I feel like it needs to be more than just one police officer. I, I, first of all, I want to give deference to Jared, that if he thinks he needs three, then I think we ought to at least give some deference to that. I would, ideally love to see maybe two and some part-time people in the summertime, but once again, this is a budget document, I would rather have the expense in the budget than ask Jeremy to come back next month or whenever, says this is how the best way to spend this money. But I, I'd rather have the money for three officers in the budget that's gonna be approved, but Jeremy's not allowed to spend it until he comes back and tells us the best plan he can utilize, to utilize that money. So I'll probably vote no on this motion based on how I stated.
I also think we need more than one. Just logistics. Two shifts, two officers.
All right, I will withdraw my motion if someone wants to make it. I did make a motion. I will withdraw my motion if someone else wants to make a different motion.
I want to second her motion.
Okay.
You did.
You did, okay.
You seconded my, okay, then it's seconded.
Now, we'll have our vote. One new officer, one new vehicle to start.
That's a different motion. That was my question. Your, your motion was for one new officer, I'm assuming that's a total package, including vehicles?
I, I, yes, when I say officer, I mean a full package that goes with an officer and what he needs to do, his, he or she needs for the job. Should we call him an officer package?
Okay, I'd, I'd like to make one comment, not to debate, but just one comment. That would give us eight police officers in, on patrol, is that right?
Uh, yes, if you, eight and the chief's correct.
And how about the one with desk duty?
Well, we don't know how long desk duty's gonna last, that knocks you back to second.
And secondly, I, I'd like to say to you that there's nothing more embarrassing in my mind for the town than to have someone, whether it's beach patrol or a police officer that's here for a short period of time, and they don't know where Fugelrund is, and they don't know where the fishing pier is. It's not fair to them, it's not fair to the town or the people that are inquiring. So I'm really skeetish about part-time police officers, for whatever that's worth. Any more comments? You ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Am I presenting your hands?
No.
No.
Who was it?
We got three.
Brian and I said no.
Okay. Murdock and Tyler say no. Okay, motion carries. Three to. All right, what's the next subject to talk about?
Move for a German.
You got a motion for a German. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where's your?